Changed it quick when you heard.
Would you call the board?
Yes, Jim Sreiter is not here. James Carvin.
Here.
Tom Ter.
I'm here.
Jeff Benfali. Kim Turetaker.
Here.
Isaiah Fromm.
Here.
All right, I approve of posting we join you for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You have a motion to approve the agenda. You have a second.
Second.
Any changes? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the 10th? Remove. You have a second.
Second.
Any corrections? Bring on James. You have Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yep.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. In the interest of time, I will just defer right to Mark.
Okay, first of all, and I'll get this to you electronically. Right now, I just want to provide an enrollment update. The district as of November 20th had 753. So that's holding steady from the third Friday count. That's good news. Of course, it's not always the same students. It isn't the same students. A couple of things I'll point out. This year's 12th grade class is 50 students. Next year's freshman class is 71. So just by simple attrition, the high school will be 225 if everything were to stay the same. So I wanted to point that out. Also, significant developments. 4K right now is sitting at 58 and kindergarten at 54. So those are two of our bigger classes. We usually add five students from 4K to 5K. Other things, what I also want to share is the, again, 12th grade being small, we also have several students that are open enrolling. So again, by natural attrition, the district's enrollment may be bigger if, you know, the enrollment trends remain the same, which is we have a large group of seniors that were open enrolled out. If we maintain that number, it will also go up. So that's an overall number. And as I said before, movement year round. And so that's, it's not the same as what it was when we were in school where everybody hurried up, moved during the summer and then stayed through the year. So. Also want to update PR initiative. Kind of in the second phase, both Austin Dale got me some information working with John Donaldson again in terms of kind of three things, what parents say about the district, our hidden gems, and also the pride that the staff and administration have in the building. So we're kind of formulating that district information is kind of next on the agenda. We may want to have a work session putting some of that stuff together as a board as an idea. Another thing, just to put a bug in the board's ear. Last year, we did some board training and talked about doing that on an annual basis. Just, you know, wondering where people are at, what you're looking for when we do it. Another thing, attended an advocacy meeting and being a, you know, I think this could also be a very good topic for the board in terms of a work session with the admin team is, you know, how do we advocate for education? So that's really important. Also, just wanted to share how a vendor, Dave Jones Plumbing, donate a framed, signed Mike Wilkinson jersey. We can do what we would like to do with it. But right now, we are in receipt of it and let them know that we appreciate the donation. Stopped by last week. In terms of our curriculum process, halfway done rating the math materials. That should be finished early mid-December. Then the second phase will be getting vendors to come in and do presentations. That's something maybe the board may or may not want to be a part of, something to consider. But also the admin team, you know, will be talking about the process tomorrow also in terms of making sure we get what we want and also get a curriculum adoption that reflects what we are, excuse me, aiming for Wisconsin Heights. And lastly, I am hearing, I haven't gotten anything officially from the SOC board, though I'm speaking with Cliff from, he's the district administrator at SOC. The recommendation from the athletic department at SOC was not enter into a co-op with Wisconsin Heights in swimming. They currently have 30 swimmers.
Girls.
Girl swimming, yep. Currently have 30 swimmers and feel, you know, full, exactly. So, thank you.
All right, committee reports. Finance committee report, and that's going to be all discussed this afternoon. So I'll just leave it till then. Okay? Public input.
In football, not talking to you guys about difference between 11 and 8 man, that I've been talking about a lot lately. There's a bunch of us in the committee there quite concerned about. Forward to grow our graduation, some of the stuff we gotta put together. So if you have any idea, why don't you then discuss them? Basically, I'll make it short and sweet. We're concerned that by an eight man, we're not going to get enough playing time for young kids and that a younger, like talk about this off work group. And that we're going to not push them all, but by not getting playing time, they're going to decide that practice, 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 not getting played. So we're thinking, our thought process is a JV squad. We still have some time we can play, but we're working up to the bottom up right now between from kindergarten up through at least eighth grade anyway. We haven't dealt with much of high school, though I've got commitment from Jacque. He said he would work with us to galvanize the whole works and start working together, side by side with each other, and try to make the participation rate soar. We've had complaints from various people about the way things were done, the way things were taken care of. So we're trying to take all that reconsideration and fix what's wrong. I've been in contact with some friends of mine from Martinville that are interested in having their kids come out and play like football. Another good way to start bringing some of that population out this way as well. So there's a lot of stuff kind of going on there. We're all about to step on our toes or not, but I, there's a bunch of us doing all we can to keep things rolling. So through that, if you guys need to get ahold of me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, district business personnel, discuss possible action to accept the resignation of Amy Kellner Cook with thanks of service since 2014. Do you have a motion? You have a second?
I'll second.
Questions? Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Discuss possible action to accept the resignation of Linda Lindley, pupil services administrative assistant with thanks of service since 2014. Remove. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, questions? Bring on Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion to hire Stephanie Perez, high school winner, cheerleading coach, with a starting annual stipend of 1,500. Remove. You have a second? Thank you. Yeah. Questions? Bring on Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve district leadership team appointments. So move. You have a second? Second. Discussion. And on Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve educator effectiveness coach appointments. So move. You have a second?
Okay.
Questions?
Is coaches so much time involved roughly?
Right, meeting about at least once every six weeks. Part of it's the on-call component. That would be the difference between the district leadership team. So they're also, they've got a group of staff that they reach out on a regular basis. You know, our first-year staff members being our primary focus, but also making themselves available. They personally went up to people as contacts, as they are for contacts. So I'm going to say on average, they're spending three to five hours a month, you know, probably more, but that would be the number.
Any other questions? Bring on Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion to hire Colin Dean as volunteer coach or approve, excuse me, Colin Dean, volunteer coach for the 14-15 boys' basketball season. Remove. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, questions? You just kind of help coaching?
Yes, he'll be helping on the person.
Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action for Sauk Prairie to add Lodi to the boys' swim co-op starting in the 15-16 season. So move. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mark, do you want to fill in any on that or?
Well, participation between in both at Wisconsin Heights and Sauk has gone down. So they're looking to add numbers to the team. Lodi is a natural connection. Several students from Lodi currently swim on its back. The Sauk Prairie Aquatic Club, which is, I'll call it the off-season club for swimming. So it'd be a natural connection. Currently, we have two students this year. Thought we could have as many as four, but we're at two, so makes sense to add.
Any other questions? Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Finance, discuss possible action, open enrollment exception. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's on page 10. Thank you. And. Got one down here, but no. Any questions? Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to approve submitted roofing bill. That starts on page 14.
And Tom, if you could add for payment of $300,000 for $46.27.
Okay.
Can you add that?
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the submitted roofing bill of $300,446.27? So move. Do you have a second?
Second.
This has all been checked over.
Right, so yeah, first of all, we're doing this because we are honoring a 30-day completion. So this is for work completed. Previous submittals, if there was work not completed or materials not received, we did not pay for it. So this is, I'm hoping this will be the last big one. Then there will be a payment for, I'll call it work completion, and then there will be approval for retainage. But what I'd like to do, if I can walk you through this kind of quickly. So as you know, and this is one thing, there was an allowance of $20,000. We've approached that. I'll talk you through it on a further document. So the process is, in order for this to come to me, Dave Ando from IRS approves it. Then it goes through their accountant at IRS. This is, you know, this project being so big with so many subcontractors requires a lot of coordination. But so the only reason it's coming to you is because IRS has approved all the work that has been completed. So that's, the summary page of everything is on page 15, and that's submitted by JRT Tabantrus. And you can see Josh Stone signing off for it. On page 16, column E, this kind of indicates the work that was done or what you're paying for in this bill. So insulation, the remainder of the insulation was delivered and installed. We had some insulation, as everybody saw onsite for a little bit, and then they delivered the rest. There's the work, and that's at the living wage. Then there's the mason work, which as you can tell during this timeframe was significant. Sheet metal materials, sheet metal labor, electrician work, electrician HVAC. Then they also have the bond, which you see are invoices, but then you see release of partial liens. And with this, in order, if the organization or if JRT wasn't paying their bills, then they go after the bond. And so that's why they see, you see this waiver of lien. The bond is specific to public entities and major projects. Liens would be more specific to a private. So you can see the individual submittals. If you go back to page 16, you see CO1, CO2, CO3, CO4. CO is abbreviation for change order. So in order for us to approve those, those have to be itemized. And then, and right now, we will have as many as seven more. I've approved one, which is okay, but we require, a summary of it, we are contesting markups. We're also contesting additional protection for the mason because we believe it's part of the contract. So those are things you'll see in the next one. So my work's not done right now, but this work has been completed, and that's why we brought it through for approval. Any questions about that?
I'll just be glad one's.
Yeah, so you can see the retainage, but on Wednesday, Carlisle will come in and certify the move for warranty. JRT will do their walkthrough. Weather permitting, right now, electric construction is close to being done. The lights on the Wisconsin Heights, lettering as well as the flay are not up yet. Everything else, you would notice some differences tonight compared to last night. Still have that, still have Modern completing some HVAC work with the piping. We put all the pipes under the roof as opposed to on top of the roof with the main office. We're getting close, but how should I put it? You'll know all the work's done when the porta-pots go. As a little sign to you, but if it's, the reason why that is, if it's an active construction site, the porta-pot has to be there. So, or when they remember to send it back, but we're still active technically. The gutters got installed last week.
Have we figured out about the repair of the lawn?
Yeah, no, that's one of the change orders we'll be debating in the near future. May, you know, we may have an executive session on a couple of topics for the board to consider.
They kind of tore it up pretty.
Yeah.
Would have been real tough to throw down a little bit of plywood.
Yeah. Plywood costs money.
Yeah. Not as much as it costs to repair.
Yeah, I will inform the board that before the lift change, our contractor set about $2,000. After the use of the other lift, additional $500 damage. So what we will do and what I believe JRT will be interested in doing, they don't want to hold this out till the end of the year because we can hold on to retainage until it's done. So we'll work to settle a price and then we'll fix, we'll cure it in the spring when it's appropriate.
Okay. Any questions on this whole fiestro? Hearing on Jim.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right, presentation on future referendum scenarios. You want to jump there?
So this is, thank you to the finance committee for their work. And of course, every time, and you know, I appreciate the New Ciclara allowed me to write an article as well as it was, you know, we were able to get out a little more in-depth information in the newsletter. But, you know, the first question, I know when we passed the first referendum was, do we need a second? We evaluated, the answer was yes, we need a third. And tonight, I just wanted to spend a little bit of time kind of going back where we've been and then also where we're going with this. So recent referendums, we've passed three. I think everybody here is aware of that. Reminder that the middle school debt was paid off in 2013-14. From 2004 to 2012, the district made difficult decisions to reduce $3.973 million. Essentially, all employee groups were reduced by 40% at that point in time. And I can make this a little bit bigger for if that is correct. As a brief summary, of course, student enrollment is tied directly to the aid. So some of this is plausible, but in terms of everything regarding structural deficits, and then even though we reduce the number of students, we still have the same number of buildings, and we have costs that just remain the same. Actually, it would be great if they would have remained the same, right? They go up, you know, three to five percent every year. So in 2006, 2007, $4.871 million of aid to where we are currently. And this is straight aid. The special adjustment, this is the state, thank goodness the state does this. This is the state saying you can't drop more than 15% in aid from year to year. If it's more, this is when this aid kicks in. So $4.871 million this year, our aid is $1.733 million. So student enrollment, why? Our property values have gone up most of the time, most years. And so we become on paper a richer district because it's equalized value divided by the number of students. And that's the dollar spent per student. That's the driver of the aid. If this is all, this scenario and the scenarios that, you know, what we're talking about tonight, we know that enrollment went up this past year, but much like a recession, we only know, we have to see a pattern. It has to exist over time. And so it's going to take two to three years for us to say, yep, our enrollment has stabilized or it's going up. So this is based on the FTE model from the Baird that we've supplied to Baird. And so we are still projected to decline over time at this point in time. Now, we can look at numbers, we'll have a better idea in February, but that's, you know, we've got to make a decision by January 21st on whether or not to go to a referendum and what to go. So if things maintain as is, we continue to reduce an aid, you know, this year, that year, basically $250,000. This year, another $250,000, and you know, roughly speaking, $250,000.
So based on this, our referendum is going to be more for a year than when we get to state aid, basically.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah.
I had the whole district pay that sum?
No.
Remember the state?
For another $1.7 million?
Sure.
No. I also want to point out, and this is, we talked about this last year, but in 2013-14, was when the sequester kicked in, a federal law. Title I, this is reading support. You know, when I first arrived, we were paying for two teachers more or less full-time. Right now, we pay for about basically 60%. So the district, and we know students need support, it's incredibly important. 4K through grade three, you know, reading to learn and then they're, or learning to read and then reading to learn. That was reduced 10%. Title II, you don't see it as much, but then there was a reduction there. Flow-through in special education also reduced $10,000 due to sequester. And early childhood is still 10%, it's just ratio, you know, 500 is 10% of 5,000. So another area where funding has changed. What do we have to look forward to this year in terms of funding? What are the potential changes? In the previous, the previous plan, the state put back, they did two things. They added categorically, by state statute, that remains. The $75 per pupil aid expires at the end of this year. So in this budget, the 15-17 budget, the legislature and then the governor would have to sign this back in. So that's something that right now, we can't plan for. Another component that is driving or has my attention, remember a couple of years ago when, for the past two years, the state schools have been at a freeze with tuition increases because of large fund balance? At the same time, there was some conversation about saying, okay, school districts, you shouldn't have more than 15% to 20% fund balance. Well, for Wisconsin Heights, we need for us not to borrow for operating purposes and, you know, we have to maintain a fund balance of 2.6 million. And we still might have to a little bit in January for two or three days. But that's nickels compared to in 2008 when we had to borrow $30,000 to $40,000 to make payroll. It's not that the money wasn't going to be there in June, but to meet payroll, which, you know, everybody does it. Even the large districts right now do it just because of the fluctuation in aid and, you know, and payments for operating the district. So one of my concerns is that we may have to reduce. One of the theories would be, okay, if you have a fund balance of greater than 15% or 20%, that will be used to reduce the taxes, local taxes for one year, and then that will create a funding cliff. If I go backwards a little, just like in, let's see, 2011, 2012, $1 million kicked in in whole harmless special adjustment aid. The district's taxes went down because the state kicked in. Well, this time it'd be locally kicking in, but then what happened the next year? Major fluctuation. Same thing will happen with this. Not hearing a lot right now, but this, going back to the $75 per pupil aid, in September, in talking to financial analysts, they said, keep it in. Two weeks ago, they said, pull it out. One of the other hints that I'm seeing is, you heard the transportation department. I'm talking, speaking differently from what they proposed. And they proposed a robust, how should I put it? I don't want to say robust, they asked for an increase just like DPI did. The difference that I'm getting to is that one of the suggestions of funding education, in a, I would say in my opinion, in more better rounded way, would go with a half percent sales tax. That same conversation is now being brought up to fund the DOT. So my point being is, I'm concerned that that's no longer an option for education.
Mark, that 15% to 20%, is that just a number that was just thrown out there?
That's what they're talking about. I mean.
Doesn't have any research base that that's what school districts.
Probably not. Maybe a little bit of historical, but most of us, we have a fund balance. I mean, that's been the best practice, but on the other hand, it is not based on not spending money. Again, for us, we need 2.6 million. 1.5 would be roughly about, 15% would be basically about 1.8 million for Wisconsin Heights. Heights. So-
And the one thing that Mark and I kind of talked about on the other day about this is the potential on how to carry some of this over without leaving it on the books, and one of the things that we talked about was like buying supplies and buying things for next year, but as we broke down, that number is so small.
It may make a difference, people would notice it, but-
Paper, toilet paper, pens, pens, you know, all of that stuff, that number is so small that you can't, can't get ahead.
Wouldn't make much of a dent.
No. They wouldn't know.
So with that said, we're fortunate to have done the HSR study, working with them, so if I get news that this is coming, this may be a decision, this is independent of our referendum conversation. But to optimize, just as even when we passed a referendum in 2011, and people said, where did the money go? It went into the, into the formula. For all, in a similar manner, we'll be prepared, or working to be prepared for options in February. So that will be something to keep on your radar. Other things, potential eliminations of the voucher cap. Now vouchers are funded off the top. So what you will hear in the press, or I anticipate, you've heard it already, I believe you'll hear it again, is, we put more money into education this year in Wisconsin. And, you know, the challenge, you know, if you said, well, Mark, show us what it looks like for us, and I would say, no, the voucher money comes off the top, then the K-12 schools split that up. So that's something I believe you'll hear. Special education voucher guarantee of $12,000 right now, how does that work? They get the regular open enrollment, if there's an additional cost, then the district that has the student says, it would cost Mark Elworthy $3,100 more to educate, and then that's, that's figured in. This would be an automatic $12,000, essentially doubling, automatically doubling the cost. Now, if Mark Elworthy had a diagnosis or a special education impairment that required less, well, an additional $5,000 could just go to that district, even though they didn't need additional compensation for those services. Put dollars on that, or so, what's changed moving forward for Wisconsin Heights? Now, it is positive that our enrollment went up. That is positive. Now, we lose some of that extra, I won't call it, we lose whole harmless dollars from the state that kind of buoyed us. So where are those adjustments? $103,000 will be gone next year. This is independent of the state budget. This is because our enrollment went up one year, and because of the three-year average, we don't qualify for that anymore. So that's a given. The 60,000 per pupil aid, so our average, as calculated based on the enrollment, that would mean 60,000, and I rounded these a little bit, just for ease. As I showed you earlier, state aid change, $256,000. Now, we do have our potential savings, and I alluded to this earlier, it's not a sure thing, but we would actually get, have fewer, the difference between open enrollment in and out is projected to shrink, that could save us 70, up to $73,000. Now, I'm not saying that's a given, in fact, I would suggest, instead of 350,000, I would be more conservative, say, we could have a change in aid of 400,000 this year. Why? You put the peg in the middle, and then you can make those adjustments. But if we think we're getting an additional 73,000, we don't get it, you know, then we're, then we're looking for money. And that, you know, right there, that's 4% of our fund balance there. Before we even talk about, hey, have we looked at, you know, paper? Have we looked at heating? All those things. This is the part that will appear to be staggering. I fully anticipate that Wisconsin, there will be a move to have Wisconsin benchmarks better than the benchmarks before, that will cost money. When we talk about more money added into the budget, that will be another, another part. Can I define that amount? Not right now. Currently, with vouchers, $1,000, 1,000 students, times 6442, we're funding vouchers at almost $6.5 million. If that doubles, which is a conservative number, almost 13 million. If we go to the camp that was proposed two years ago, 65 million. Again, that money is all off the top, 80% of the students that received voucher money attended a non-public school. And again, the special education cost. The other thing, it's up top, just want to point out to you, it used to be a flat rate, you know, K-12, they're now differentiating between K-8 students and 912 students, these are projected numbers to change. These are suggestive, these aren't real, but add 1,000, there's, change 6 to 7, 7.5, 15 million, and 75 million.
Currently, Mark, Wisconsin Heights receives how much for each student?
We didn't, I'll get, I want to give a definitive, I know you asked that question, Jim. Well, 20%? Here, let me do it, about 1,200. Well, now, let me get a better number. Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking more 2,000 if it's 10, let me, let me hit that number better.
But it's safe to say that-
We're funding vouchers at a great, a voucher student greater than the students that attend Wisconsin Heights. That is accurate.
And in the proposal for the voucher, for 14, 15, the 72 and 7800 are current this year, and the language reads that the per pupil money for vouchers will never be less than the prior year, so-
It's the old per pupil language.
So it's only going to go up. I mean, they're not going to say, oh, next year we're going to go back to, you know, $6,400, like in 13-14. And the language currently reads that it will never be less than the prior year, so.
And that, the living includes special ed vouchers. What can I hold out for, for hope? That our leaders believe in local control. And that will be the internal challenge that individuals will have when these bills come up. You know, Wisconsin is steeped in local control, and the question that they'll have to answer to their constituents is, who's make, what decisions do local officials continue to make? You know, you saw that, not as much on the surface in past budgets, but it was there, and hopefully, that, that question will come up. I think it's indicative, the Senate has come out and said, wait a minute, we'd like, we believe in local control. Now, to what degree, you know, debatable and everything, but right now, it's the Senate that's said, no, this, you know, the statement has been, we'd like to get this budget from the governor's office, we'd like to get this budget set and ready to go, so people can plan for implementation in July. The Assembly has said, sounds like a great idea. The Senate has said, no, we're going to need to talk about some stuff. And so that's, those are the conversations to watch. But even the, the number of legislatures, new first-year people, the turnover has been great, I think. What has happened in the state over the past decade has accelerated, you know, there are people who have said, this is, this is enough, or this isn't what I signed up for.
I'm going to say, we've been changing the subject here. When you look at 80% of the 30-year-olds attending a non-public school, what does that say to us in a public school?
That's the tough one. If you go back, what I haven't talked about here is Milwaukee vouchers. In, you know, in the 90s, everybody agreed that, how should I put it? Struggling schools sometimes need help. And that argument could probably be made, and I'm just being respectful of other districts, that could probably be made of some other districts right now. So, how do we identify those? In fact, that was the most recent voucher debate. Why was it expanded to Racine? You know, but Wisconsin Heights is paying, already been paying between 25 and 35,000 every year to fund Milwaukee vouchers. We've said goodbye to aid already on that. Yeah, that's, for us, that's where we need to advocate for education, and we've got to set our standards high, and hold each other to high standards. I don't know if I answered your question, Kim. It may have been rhetorical. Is that what you were thinking, or?
I guess, and that's hard for, I mean, we think of ourselves as a good school. There are issues obviously in other places.
Right. The people are going to need to hear our voice. Because the reality is, Wisconsin Heights, although it used to be kind of in the median, in the middle, there are far more Wisconsin Heights in Wisconsin than there are, you know, Madison, Milwaukee, Racine, Appleton, Eau Claire, Wausau, Green Bay, La Crosse. And that's, hopefully, if we go back to local control, people say, okay. But we can't wait, as we've talked about before, we can't wait for other people to solve our problems, we've, we've got to champion our own causes.
What was your question again, Kim?
Not necessarily a question, but obviously, there's an issue with public schools somewhere. Too bad that we're helping pay for that somewhere else, but-
I'm going to ask a question, I hope it doesn't come out stupidly, but what would happen if Wisconsin Heights was to go technically private and fund this other million dollars that we're getting on, on the-
Tax rules?
Yeah.
Local rules? Well, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I've run a million-dollar scenario for a bond. And, you know, we can do it, but, you know, the question is, you just got to evaluate it. Some districts, some districts, although favorite topics, some districts were, but it, they need, you need to have a lower free and reduce lunch, have purposely done that with USDA requirements. I believe Monachee is the only district in Dane County at the high school level, they do not accept federal dollars for their, their lunch program, so therefore, they aren't tied to the lunch program. But they also have a far lower, I think, to do that, you've got to have a free and reduce of less than 10%. Or find a way to fund it. So, I mean, that would be far more fundable. Now philosophically, people may not agree, you know, not everybody may want to think, I'm paying for Mark Elworthy's lunch, we can't afford it.
What would it do, what would it do to property taxes if, if we were to tell the state, you know what, fine, we're out of, we're out of the school business, we have a private school out here now.
Aaron and I could run a scenario on that. Like I said, I've got a number, but I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not going to-
I think we should. I mean, would that, would that, that would get us out of everything then, at that point, wouldn't it?
Tom, are you asking, can we like, tell the state, we no longer want your aid, we just want to fund ourselves 100%?
And we will not, and we were completely out of Wisconsin school system.
Can we do that? And if we can do that, what is the dire path?
Yes.
There's currently several districts that, that are called negative weight districts.
Well, they're zero-weighted. We're negative tertiary.
Like Janey Marion?
Yeah. In certain places with a weight.
But I'm talking about just getting completely out of the Wisconsin school system itself. We're, we're that close. Yeah, I think we are. Close to it. That's why I mean, as I said earlier. Yeah. I mean, we only get $1 million in aid.
One of our other options, but I've stepped away from it, is being a charter district.
Yeah.
But the issue with that is that they want to have a state charter school board, so the school board's gone.
No, I think we just go privatize. We just privatize.
Just get memos, right?
What would be the advantage of that?
Privatize?
Yeah, to give away to the school, the-
We don't have to. We don't have to put up with this shit. We don't have to do it on, yeah.
Then they, they might say, we don't get any open enrollment dollars coming in. So we'd have to figure that, right now, we're out.
Well, yeah, but-
Well, but I'm just, I'm just talking.
But I think schools get it.
No, they get vouchers. And understand, there's certain areas for vouchers, so, Aaron, I think the other thing we need to do is get, you know, what it takes to be a voucher school, not that I'm suggesting we become one, but the flip of it, there's, it's, for the non-public schools, it, it's not as simple as we can get more money, because they're signing, they lose control over it. Now they're getting money, that's the trade-off, and so that's what they've had to do. So, I believe there's only one district, one school in Dane County that's accepting vouchers. Now, that's different in different places. So, it, that's just something-
I still think we should explore it.
We can explore it, but, you know, the question is, what do we want to focus our-
And the projections that Mark ran on one of the first couple of slides is based on declining enrollment, you know, obviously, since that's where we have been going, but obviously, at some point, when we reach that peak of in, or increasing enrollment, and we drop off the whole harmless, we're eventually going to be seeing more aid, so obviously, this is, you know, projection period of decline.
Part of this is, you know, we're showing this to you tonight, and you're, you're answering some of it, the question we're going to ask you at the end is, what do you need to see? I mean, Aaron and I have done projections based on growth. We, we know that, and that's where Aaron's talking. We've, we've seen what growth will work in our benefit, but this is based on declining.
And to me, maybe, maybe what we do is we focus on the referendum right now, and then after, after we get through our referendum talk, pass it, or pass it on to the, as a board, to put it on the ballot, maybe that's when we start focusing more on, what are alternatives to being in the state school system?
There you go. Good way to put it, alternatives to being in the state school system.
It may just-
Yeah. Well, both advantages, this is very interesting. Yeah. We're that close. I think we are that close.
What happens if the enrollment goes up to 1,000 kids?
What's that?
What happens if the enrollment goes up to 1,000 kids?
For funding?
For funding.
You ever seen that first number, about 4.8 million? That, that, that's where we were.
Yeah.
But for us to get out of negative tertiary aid, everything expenses would remain the same, we need to be, last time I ran it, was over 1,100. So, and that's assuming property value remains flat, which it won't, I'll get to some of that, but. And the other thing we can't forget, though, so you saw 1.7, but I'd add 300,000 for open enrollment aid. We may no longer qualify for $100,000 in special ed aid from the feds, because that's all going through the states. So all of our aid, our federal aid and state aid-
Goes.
I would, that's what, if I had to make a, say, consider this, the question really is, is what's the impact on state aids? What's the impact on federal aids?
And the other thing, Ryan, is that, that's a three-year average. So if it bumped up to 1,000 next year?
We'd only see 25%.
We'd, we'd feel it, if it stayed the same over the next three years, then we'd be at 1,000.
Right.
So the DPI plays, I, I do, I've alluded to it. Tony Evers has, basically gone on record for the last three budgets of saying, like to restore back to what it was. In my early administrative years, the per pupil aid was 240, went all the way up to 248, and then in '09 is when it went down to 200, and then zero, now 75. So restoring that, that number is about 600,000 for Wisconsin Heights. High-cost transportation aid from 33% up to 50, we currently qualify for that, so that's a positive. And special adjustment, this happened, this is one of, this is why taxes also went down in 2011, because the whole harmless kicked in sooner. The concept is, if they do it at 90%, there's more potholes, but they're not as deep, or the funding gaps are less. That would also- That would also help us out. But the key is, if you make it an adjustment, make it sustainable over time. The difference was, the following year, when it went down to fifteen percent, well, then the district was responsible for five percent or five hundred thousand dollars, that wasn't here.
How about we just fund all the schools across Wisconsin at fifty percent? I would love fifty percent funding.
So, our current budget, enrollment is declining, equalized growth, you know, the good news about Dane County is, we're a little more recession-proof than most counties, but we never recover size, so, and I think that's, that's a positive thing. State average is two point six percent. So our operational structural deficit, three to five percent each year, which is three hundred to five hundred thousand. What would that look like? Again, not making reductions. Here's the three hundred thousand new money each year. That's what the numbers look like. Five hundred thousand new dollars each year, again, that's where we're at. So our challenges, you know, we've added IT, and we're at, we're doing some quick math, we have two hundred and fifty additional portable devices in the district. Last year, we had four hundred and fifty. So right now, we're at seven hundred devices. More devices, more support. Student population is more diverse. This year, our, the students coming in, we added ten special ed students. We may have other students as they go through the identification process, that may go up, so I think that's a consideration. It's no longer as predictable as it was in the past. Fix costs continue to increase, aging buildings, you know, HSR report, you know, it's not like we have to do it all in one year, so I'm not, you know, screaming, oh my goodness, the sky is falling, but we have to keep that in perspective. You know, just as the Maisel chiller, you know, our air conditioning, we need to replace it. Black Earth is in the same boat, it's just that one's broken, one's currently functioning. IT updates, that could be up to one point two million, based on a study, and my statement for the night is, what's our challenge in Wisconsin, we are now funding two educational systems? That sets us apart, I believe, from every other governmental entity in the state. So, that's kind of the state of the budget, and, you know, the discussion I wanted to have was, and, you know, Jimmy had asked for funding per student, Tom had asked for, you know, the what-if scenario, if we go by ourselves, what are our options for more autonomy? I think is, sense what you were asking. What other things, you know, we're prepared, you know, Aaron and I have more spreadsheets than you'd prefer to see, I'd be happy to show it to you, but we have, this is based on declining, we have scenarios on a little bit of growth, but I think we've always planned on what we have, not what we hope to have, and that's, that's served us well. You know, the biggest thing is, based on less aid, we need, you know, additional money. The other conversations to have in the next couple more meetings is, two years or three years. The advantage of three years is, it gets us, gives us an opportunity to evaluate a bond referendum, being upfront, you know. And the same thing, I mean, I was saying, two years ago, we need to fix a roof. We may have to go to referendum for a roof of one point two million, and I hope that the district sees, our promise is, we've asked for what we need, we've looked for ways, you know, we, we're fortunate to have additional dollars. We use them for long-term, one-time, long-term projects.
And I think, as we start approaching this referendum, I think those kinds of things need to be upfront and out in the open so that people actually know that we were talking the one point two million, and with additional dollars that came in, we were able to re-filter that and get this project done completely and wipe out that one point two million. I mean, people have to know that, to know that we're doing our jobs up here.
Yeah. Yeah, because we were very close to putting out a referendum for that roof.
Yeah, it could have been, how should I put it? It could have been as quick as last spring, if we couldn't, if it didn't happen.
And traditionally, as everybody knows, we've done two-year referendums. I know that we've always talked about that third year being, so that it's more predictable for our funding, but, you know, we just need to decide if we think that a two-year is easier to pass than a three-year, and go from there. And you've got the numbers, I would assume, two and a three-year on tax base, on what's the cost?
Yeah.
That'll be at the next meeting?
That'd be, yeah, I just wanted to hear, we wanted to address, you know, first of all, answer questions. The scenarios we're developing are what I would call even increases, not an up and down, or in the past. If we can optimize, you know, if you went back to the first one, we went five twenty-five and two sub, five seventy-five and two seventy-five, it's because the new doll, we, how should I put it, we made it predictable.
Yeah.
And that's, that's how we've got it set up right now, but we just wanted to hear what people are looking for, if there's other questions before we roll out what we, you know, the needs, if you will.
Anybody else got anything that they want for the next meeting?
Again, as enrollment, if enrollment were to increase, talked in the past, we probably had a capacity in the right places, spread out over the correct grades, you know, we can absorb sixty to eighty students. Now that, we've gone up, you know, it's, and I base that on this, it's, let's see, K-12 through, K grades, K through twelve, three sections, if we go at sixty, you know, just across the board, sixty being that point, that's where I got that. After that, you know, the eighth grade is at seventy-one. I mean, that's type, quite honestly, four K, it's exciting, but, you know, we add ten students, you know, you know, that becomes a challenge, and, you know, in terms of how we support students at the most critical timeframe of learning, making sure they have the best opportunity for success.
You know what I think would be interesting to, and that nobody could really say, is, if we did privatize Wisconsin Heights, how many people we get moving into the district just because of that?
And interesting, wouldn't it? To see what happens.
So remember, though, that probably means nothing to augment the food program, which is roughly, what, sixty-five thousand a year, too?
Yeah, so you have to...
So we need to look at...
You'd have, and state aid, early enrollment program, to see how much it would take to go privatized. Oh, yeah, busing.
And busing.
And busing.
Busing in.
So it's more than one point seven, so maybe we're not quite as close to Dane.
I'd say we're getting pretty close to three million. I mean, we're over two.
But wouldn't, wouldn't all the money that's on your property taxes now, wouldn't that stay just directly into Wisconsin Heights?
I'd say that would depend on the state statutes, that would be something for us to determine.
So we're not sending money to those other schools?
There you go.
So we're not, just the leaky faucet here?
There you go, because if we start sending a million dollars, I'll...
Yeah.
I think the question is, what do the state statutes say, and I guess is, I don't know, my guess is it considers two funding, two primary funding sources, or federal, state, local.
Yeah.
And at that point, do we have to honor open enrollment and things like that, too? Does our money leave for that also? Just one of those questions.
Oh, yeah, no, I, yeah, I don't think it's probably been the first time it's asked. The districts that have zero state aid have asked it before, and I have a pretty good, I, you know, I'll just, I'll talk to a couple people. That's the best way to do it.
Yeah. How many students get our facilities?
What, two-thirds capacity right now?
Okay.
I know this will bring shivers, and Jim, I'll rely on you, because you were part of those conversations. When we built this, the capacity was about fifteen hundred, wasn't that the goal? To have all three buildings, and, you know, we could go about fifteen hundred, I would hope, this is where I'm asking, that's assuming we weren't using classrooms on stage at that time?
You're right.
Because we were prior to the building, yeah, about fifteen hundred.
And we had K to E, almost five hundred, and E to, and four hundred and seventy equal after, so that's, that's about as much as...
I look back at school, says, your class size, remember kids that was more of an issue in the seventies?
Right. It's just that balance, understanding that instructions changed, you know, just several things have changed, and, but I think fifteen hundred's a fair number. Still requires, but where I go back is, that still requires renovation, I don't want to over...
Well, I don't, I'm just saying that...
And I understand that, I just restating.
There's a, the standard is a square, X minus square feet per pupil.
Correct, right, right.
So we have enough square feet to support fifteen hundred students.
Right, we could look at that, too, we...
No, I don't mean exactly.
Oh, no, thanks. But all I'm saying is, it'll be an easy question and answer, because of our study that we did.
Right.
We can do that.
Right, okay.
Yep, and we're, we're almost, right now, we're almost double the minimum, so that fits pretty well with fifteen.
Anybody else? All right, so, future meetings, do you need any committees?
I think...
We're going to put together a curriculum, maybe at some point, since Dave is not here, I'll try to get older and find houses.
Are there some dates that would work? I guess, since the three board members are here, if we could create, I think that would be a good idea.
Kurt, over to you.
Yeah.
Do you want to go first?
Six or six-thirty on the eight?
Mondays are until the, until the fifteenth are bad for me.
Well, I have pretty much a meeting in the morning. Except Amy's not, I mean, that'd be perfect for her to do it on the board. Let's pick two dates, and then I'll just ask her and find out. Tuesday, December ninth.
Get out in the evening?
And we can get a new, new schedule earlier.
By five?
Yeah, we get a five o'clock. We should go to that one and see.
For the public relations, I've been getting some bits on signage, the way you talked about, from Terry and from Dave.
Okay.
But I'd like them to present the information to the whole committee.
Okay.
But I don't, we're not going to do anything until after Christmas.
Okay.
January, and we'll pick the time to do that.
All right. And then, future meetings, as we stated before, it's going to be the eighth and the fifteenth of December, so, second and third Mondays. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So, Kim, the fifteenth would work for me. If you wanted to do it on a Monday with the...
Okay, let's put Tuesday, December ninth, or Monday, December fifteenth, and Mark's going to ask him.
Good. All right, you have a motion to adjourn?
We have a move.
You got a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?